Welcome. I'd like to remind everyone to please silence any cell phones and mute your mics on your computers if you have a computer with you. If you'd like to address the board during public comment, please sign up on the sign in sheet. It's usually at the back of the table before we start, but if you're online, please put your name in the chat and announce yourself during introductions so that we know you'd like to speak. If you're presenting to the board today, the microphones on the table at the front are active when the red light at the top is on. So we need to press the button on the base in order to ensure that it is, and please make sure that the mic is close enough to you so that it actually picks up your voice. With that, I'm Zan Ojuro, Board Chair, and I will do a round of introductions, including in the room.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Wes Corney, County Council.
Rick Crager, Assistant County Administrator.
James Wright, Social Planner.
Petra Sheets, Intron Community Development Director.
Joel Geier, Benton County Resident.
Ian Williams, Associate Planner.
Jesse Allen, Director of Natural Areas Parks and Events.
Matt Witherall, June, Department Director.
Gary Stock, Public Works.
Sean, where are we?
Mid-Dade, POC staff.
Where are we in public information?
Erica Milo, Board Recorder. And online?
Ken Eklund is here, Benton County resident.
Thank you, Ken.
Mark Jaeger, Benton County resident.
Morning. You have three minutes. There is a three minute timer over here on the table to the side if you want to keep track of time.
So yeah, my name is Joel Geier, Benton County resident. You've met me before, and thank you and good morning, Commissioners. In December 2022, I brought to your attention that Benton County was out of compliance with state statute with your suspension of the Disposal Site Advisory Committee in favor of an ad hoc committee. That situation is still uncorrected, and you're still out of compliance. Today, you're voting on a motion that is clearly aimed at getting around our own county development code. The code clearly specifies that the Solid Waste Advisory Council shall advise on any application to place solid waste on land not previously designated for that purpose. You're proposing to, quote, "delegate the duties of SWAC to another committee that few people have ever heard of, that has no past experience in landfill issues, and that does not seem to meet on any kind of regular basis." This amounts to a de facto change in county code. As such, it requires a county hearing, a public hearing. So please table this motion so that you can meet that requirement. Public input might help you to avoid making further mistakes. We've seen a lot of these ad hoc schemes in the last past three years, always in a direction that seems to be aimed at greasing the skids for landfill expansion. No doubt, these schemes seem clever when you discuss them among yourselves, but you're not really fooling anyone who doesn't work in this building. Trust in county government has become a major issue, and you've seen the results at the ballot box, and not just on the landfill, but on other issues. When, as county commissioners, you look for ways to sidestep your own rules, this damages your own credibility and erodes public trust. You also run the risk of making more bad decisions that will impact the people of this county and the region for decades to come. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who wishes to testify or to speak at public comment this morning?
Yes, this is Mark Jaeger.
Good morning, Mark. Go ahead.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Mark Jaeger, Benton County resident. I'm also here to testify in opposition of your planned motion for adoption at the end of this meeting under new business. And whether you're doing this out of ignorance or defiance of the public process, it's ill-advised and not valid. When you have gone through a process, and we have seen the documentation where the decision on this proposed motion and this effort to transfer, quote unquote, duties from the Solid Waste Advisory Council to NREC, you have to know that those discussions are in fact violating public meeting laws. You also have to know that making this sort of decision cannot change a law by simply having a majority motion without the proper and legal ordinance modification process. So I am objecting to and recommend that you do not take your proposed action as advised by your county council to modify Chapter 77.305, which is in fact Benton County Code and the law, under your motion of D-2024-048. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Yes, this is Ken Eklund. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ken Eklund, Benton County resident and Chair of the Disposal Site Advisory Committee and the Solid Waste Advisory Council. I'm also addressing your agenda item today where you're proposed to assign SWAC's review of a forthcoming expansion application by Coffin Butte Landfill to NREC. County Code assigns SWAC the power to do this review because SWAC is uniquely qualified to perform this duty. SWAC's purview is solid waste management in Benton County. The decision to dissolve SWAC was done without any public testimony, indeed without any consultation with SWAC itself. The only rationale given for dissolving SWAC was that its functions would be taken over by the SMMP Task Force. But over a year later, the SMMP Task Force has not materialized, and indeed, it would never have been able to review the expansion application in the first place. This appears to be the latest maneuver in a long line of maneuvers by county government to disenfranchise the voices of those who know something about the landfill and have questions about what they have found out. First, there was the one-table rule that restricted what DSAC and SWAC could talk about and how long they could meet. Then you dissolve SWAC, or more precisely, you withdrew staff support from it. You couldn't dissolve DSAC, so you suspended it. DSAC's still here, though, and planning to meet this month, but maybe it knows a little too much about the landfill. It's as if the Benton County Commissioners feel that knowledge about landfilling solid waste is a liability, not an asset, and also that county code is something that is only of concern to the little people, something that you can wave away whenever it inconveniences you without a coherent rationale or even a hearing. This is a gutsy stance to take in an election year. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone else? Okay, thank you for that.
I'd like to speak. My name is Kevin Canega.
Good morning, Kevin.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Canega. I live in Soap Creek Valley. I'm a resident of North Benton County. I would like to second what the previous three speakers have shared with you this morning. I want you to know that more or less the word on the street is that you've already made your decision to expand the Coffin Butte landfill. You're going to allow Republic Services to get their toe across the south side so that they'll go back to closing Coffin Butte Road someday in the future. This has been a generational issue. Please keep that in mind. There was an attempt to expand in the eighties, an attempt to expand in the nineties, and there was the 2021 request for an expansion. It's not just the NIMBYs. All of the residents of Benton County are affected by Coffin Butte landfill. It doesn't belong in a rural residential area. It has simply outgrown its space. The best thing about Benton County Talks Trash is that we know there is no conditional use permit for Cell Six. Certainly, Benton County staff and maybe government sided with Republic Services during Benton County Talks Trash and wants the public to believe that there is an approval. There is no approval for Cell Six. You were sent a request by an attorney to present that document to show that there is indeed an approval. Nothing has happened because you do not have an approval for Cell Six. Yet at this point, you are going to be allowing Republic Services to go in to the quarry at some point on your supposed need for an expansion. Benton County doesn't need an expansion. Republic Services wants an expansion. Please start listening to the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we will come back to this issue when we get to that agenda item. But at this point, we are going to move on to Agenda Item 4.1, Discussion Regarding Food Truck and Winery Approvals with Petra Sheets and James Wright. Thank you.
Good morning. First and foremost, thank you for having me here. My goal for this meeting is to provide our reinterpretation regarding food trucks and winery approvals. Ultimately, my goal and our goal is to harmonize our interpretation with state statutes and neighboring counties. I've structured this PowerPoint to reflect state statutes, current county code, neighboring county policies, and lastly, a deep dive and evaluation into Senate Bill 841. Senate Bill 841 was enrolled in 2013, bringing a finality about the appropriate intensity of agritourism and other commercial events held at wineries. This 2013 document established new rules governing food services at permitted-use wineries. Our development code was then updated in 2015 to reflect these changes. In 2017, a document titled Guidance for Food Services at Wineries on Farmland was created in conjunction with the Department of Land Conservation and Development, Oregon Liquor Control Commission, and the Oregon Wine Grocers Association. Wineries that are established under State Statute 215-452 are allowed to have a food service. The intent was to allow for wineries to pair food with the wine to enhance the wine appreciation and to ensure responsible alcohol services. However, a winery may not operate as an independent restaurant. State Statute 215-283 allows for agritourism events to take place on any EFU property. However, if a winery is approved under State Statute 215-452, which is a land use review and approval, the winery may not conduct agritourism events outside of this. ORS 215-452 states that a winery may market and sell items of which is incidental to onsite retail sale of wine, including food and beverages. This is required to be made available as outlined in the Oregon Liquor Control Act and may serve food in conjunction with any of the following activities: a luncheon, a winemaker's dinner, wine tasting, or carrying out of an agritourism or other commercial event, as well as host for a charitable event. So to clarify, a winery that is approved under 215-452 is on the far right side of the screen. They may conduct any of those agritourism events, but are not allowed to conduct the agritourism events located to the left. For example, a winery may not conduct room and board, equestrian events and dog trials, and a bed and breakfast. Our county code was updated in 2015 and reflects the changes made in State Statute 215-452. Benton County does not recognize Agritourism Subsection 215-283. As you recall, farm stands, home occupation, commercial activities, and in conjunction with the farm use, all trigger land use approvals. Our code states verbatim the state statutes from 215-452 with the addition that the first six events shall be reviewed every five years for approval for an agritourism. To summarize up to this point, a winery is allowed to have both food in conjunction with Oregon Liquor Control Commission and agritourism events. Oregon Liquor Control Commission, however, does not require any particular food service to be made available in conjunction with the consumption of wine at wineries. Although Oregon Liquor Control Commission often considers food services and determining when miners are present, this determination is not a requirement for a particular level of food service according to Senate Bill 841. In conducting my review and my reinterpretation, I reached out directly to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, specifically Representative Hillary Foote, and raised the question if there is any direct prohibition of the allowances of outside food vendors, and this was her response. She stated that there is no express prohibition in the statutory language against including outside vendors in the permitted events. Specifically for land use approvals, there is no express prohibition in statutory language against including outside vendors in permitted agritourism or other commercial events. These events are subject to the standards described, which include finding that the event included participation of non-winery venriers are subordinate to the production and sale of wine. Do not create a significant impact. Furthermore, I then decided to proceed and reach out to our following neighboring counties. I reached out to Yamhill, Polk, Marion, Lane, Lynn, and Lincoln. The ones listed here are the departments I heard back from. I spoke with Ken Friday, who is a Planning Director of Yamhill County, and inquired to the best of his knowledge, is there any prohibition on the allowances of food trucks for agritourism events? He stated, to the best of his knowledge, there is not. Yamhill, Polk, Marion, and Lane all allow for wineries to host food trucks at specific agritourism events. Currently, in our code, we require the renewal of every five years of these agritourism events, and they shall not exceed 72 hours. A planning official may at any time require the winery to submit a statement that is prepared by a CPA, Certified Public Accountant, that certifies the compliance of the winery with the subsection of the previous tax year, ensuring that they are not over their 25% of NCL sales. When I was conducting this review and reevaluation, I did look at agricultural properties. Unfortunately, other agricultural properties, UPICs and standard farms, do not have an agritourism allowance for food services. Only mass gathering, farm-to-table dinners, bed and breakfasts, and guest ranches may provide meals. Wineries are the only service to allow for catered food and limited food services. This last slide is guidance focusing further on Senate Bill 841. The key aspects are to ensure that the food truck is subordinate to the wine and is not more than the agritourism allowances. These questions here will help us identify if it is allowed. Is the food tailored to wine offering, or is it a standalone service? Is the winery consistently providing food or instead reserving the service for special occasions? Is the predominant activity in the tasting room dining or whining? And can the winery produce an accounting of compliance with that 25% rule? And lastly, has the limit of the agritourism events been exceeded? So in summary, our reinterpretation of state statute and our code aligns that there is no prohibition in using outside food vendors for agritourism events. Other local counties have identified and allowed for food trucks to be placed at wineries at these specific events. Our code is currently in compliance and is allowable of this action. Hope this helps. Please let me know if you have any questions.
I definitely have questions. You say that basically our code allows at this point for food trucks at wineries for special events, but the map that you show displays a map of wineries where food trucks are not allowed, and I don't understand. But I don't, I don't understand.
Sure thing. This was a map that I pulled from the Gazette Times after the recent inquiry regarding food trucks.
Got it. So it's not a map that we generated. I didn't look at the fine print. Okay. So what's, what are we doing as we move forward? What, how, is it up to us to indicate what we would like to see? Or is it a matter of county policy and interpretation of the code that we will allow food trucks at wineries if it is, the food trucks, food is tailored to pair with the wine? But how are, how are we interpreting that?
Sure thing. So going forward, we will be following policy in that situation, similar to State Statute neighboring counties. Furthermore, during the approval process for food carts, environmental health is signed off.
Yep.
So that would be a continuous check that is land use approval and review and as part of one of the agritourism events. It'll allow us from the planning sector to monitor and engage it. We'll also be reaching out to the wineries to establish that renewal period every five years.
Okay. Questions from?
I appreciate getting our county aligned with our neighbors. I think that's generally good, good practice. I like the idea of renewal every, every five years, like some other events are required. events are required to do. Because it's a balance. I mean, generally, these are in rural areas. What's the impact on the neighborhood and is there a mission creep on the part of the wineries where, oh, that we drugs there all the time, kind of, oh, it looks more like a restaurant. So I appreciate the reviewing this part of the code so that what we do make, make sense, but having a checklist in place, environmental health seems like a good, good idea to have them involved. So appreciate the effort and I think we're on the right track here.
Yeah, as it just informed me that it's also in tandem with code enforcement as well, too. So to ensure that we are obliged by these regulations, and the wineries are as well, if we get reports of excess use of a food truck outside of the agritourism events, then that would be terms for investigation with our code compliance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wise.
Well, thank you, James. I appreciate all of the good information here. You clearly did your homework. It's very complete. Thank you. I appreciate that. So just a couple of points of clarification for me. So the map that's in here, that's from the Gazette Times. So would we, are we saying that we can allow food trucks where the black dot is saying that they're not allowed?
Yeah, so the yellow dots are within city jurisdictions, city boundaries.
Got it.
Therefore allowed. The black are all the other local wineries. It was just the most comprehensive map I was able to find.
Perfect. So if we were to make this map, they would all be yellow.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then could you just go back to the part about, I know there's, one of the issues recently was like layers of this department says it's okay, this one says it's not. So the environmental health or the the food inspection part, or could you speak to that? How that, that's all worked out that that's gonna, we changed the process so that we're gonna talk and can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. So I would say that recently, these last two years, we have grown really close with other departments. So our communication and our review of any situations for approval. Environmental Health reached out to us in the past to ask whether or not, sorry.
Construction.
Whether or not a food truck would be allowed in that situation. At that point in time, they looked into it and they stated that, you know, it's a equivalent of a restaurant and therefore not allowed. And we were unfortunately not able to sign off or approve on any of environmental health designations for placement of those food carts. So going forward, we're hoping to work more collaboratively.
Thank you. So there is nothing really that we need to do today. It's just, you're bringing us good news. Thank you.
I appreciate the update, and I also really appreciate the thoroughness of the research and the clarity with which you presented it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Just thank you for the effort and this effort was instigated because of a complaint from a winery. Is that correct? I think it shows that Benton County can be responsive and not afraid to take a look in how we're doing business and if it makes sense and where necessary, make adjustments. So, thank you.
Agreed. And what is the communications plan to communicate with the wineries in the county?
I'll probably be reaching out to all the wineries within the county. First, I'm going to track down any land use approvals that they have, and then follow through with the approval for the agritourism.
Got it. That makes sense. Okay.
Is your part of the process complete at this point? Then it is just a matter of notifying effective parties, affected parties.
Correct.
Thanks.
But it sounds like people, the wineries do have to have those events permits in place in order to be able to take advantage of this, and some of them do and some of them don't.
Yeah, that's a part of that.
Yeah, so that's the element that still has to be. You know, so there is a permitting process, although that permit doesn't have to be reviewed except every five years. Got it. Okay, thank you. Item 4.2, update on new construction at Benton County facilities with Gary Stockhoff from Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners. In an effort to kind of do this on a regular basis, we've scheduled the first meeting every month to update you on, right now, I'll call the big three, the Crisis Center, the Courthouse, DA, and then the EOC. So first up, I'll, a quick update on the Crisis Center. The good news is our vapor mitigation effort has been accepted and passed whatever test it was supposed to pass. And so the contractor is actually now getting ready to start doing the remaining of the foundations and the slabs. And when that's done, probably in the next two to three weeks, you will actually see walls above the ground. So, long time coming, but we're, we're actually now going to see a building coming out of the ground. So that's the good news on the, on the Crisis Center. We are still, April, Ricky, others are trying to get it with HERSA and figure out the NEPA for the $1 million that is coming via that source. At this point, unless April knows, I don't think we've heard back from HERSA yet, so that's still out there. But we are building this Crisis Center period. So that's the good news. We're moving forward. Any questions on the Crisis Center?
Are we on budget?
I think so, yeah.
That was my question. Is there any question about the $1 million grant?
I'll, I'll do my best to answer that. So as Gary alluded to, there was one other component we needed to do was complete the NEPA survey. We have done, gone through all that process. It's been submitted. At this point, Commissioner, there is no indication that we would have any problems in terms of securing that, that resource. As Gary knows, we always, of course, wait until the federal agency gets back to us and confirms that and puts it in writing. But at this point, we're not anticipating any problem with federal grant, and I can confidently say that everything is within budget at this point, and we don't, you never can tell. I never say never. But certainly at this point, we're on track.
And we've hit every underground tank, no demand. So I think we're past that. So it's all good.
Don't jinx it. No, just kidding. And I just, to clarify for those listening, NEPA stands for National Environmental Policy Act. Is that correct?
That is correct. And just as a little side note, that is something that we found now as we've gotten these federal grants that we have to do with every federal grant that we have. So we have, I think last time shared, hired a consultant, we've got them on basically Retainer, and they are processing one for our electric vehicle project at the charging station at Sunset. We've got one on Retainer to help us out with Monroe. We've got one, the same one, on Retainer to help us out with the EPA/DEQ grant for the sewer at LC in Alpine. So they're quite busy, but, and they're all different federal agencies. They have different requirements and timeframes. I will say it seems the HERSA has been one of the more challenging ones. I know Ricky really worked hard to try to get that narrowed down and nailed down, and it was crickets for a long, long time. And it's crickets again right now. So we, we will press on. The courthouse. We are still inching towards being underway. I will start out with the really, really, really good news. And I will give kudos to our building folks. We have permits to be, actually build the building. Those plans were turned in, reviewed, and approved by our folks in a very timely fashion. And we will be paying the fees or have paid the fees to have those permits released that once we're able to get the permits through the federal folks in the city, that will actually be underway. So kudos to the building folks, because that was a heavy lift and those went very, very quickly. So we appreciate that part of the thing. The permit that we're actually waiting on, or permits, I should say, is the one with the Federal Corps of Engineers, which is, I think, I'm going to say this probably backwards, but it's the 106, which is wetlands in this, but associated with that is another one, the 404, which is the historic Swick House. So right now, we are in the waiting period for SHIBO, State Historic Preservation Office, to respond to our draft memorandum of agreement that was required through the Corps of Engineers and SHIBO to address the demolition of the Swick House. So at this point, I think they have until July 11th, SHIBO does, to respond. We have offered some mitigation measures to address that, and I think that they've been agreed upon. But until we have everything signed, we can't really move forward with, with the city to get the final permit. So there's the track for this, the house, having that done. And then we still have the public improvement, private contractor improvements. That's the permit that we're working with for the city. We are resubmitting to the city on Monday, the 8th. Hopefully this time it's, everything is there and then it's all kind of leaning towards the end of this month. First of next month, I actually have the permit in hand, and then we'll figure out when to start work. But right now, the tentative date is late August, early September before we'll be breaking ground. So on budget, the good news with the delay is the contractors have been able to narrow down questions regarding the plans or products or this, that, and the other. So we really actually do have a pretty buildable set of plans and everything ready to go, and the budget is right, right where we need it to be. So that is the good news. So the group has worked really hard to whittle that down because we did have a little bit of an overage about six months ago. But just through using a different kind of air conditioning unit or, you know, a different type of a treatment over here, we've been able to whittle that down to where we are in budget. I think that's where we're at with the courthouse.
So we should have permits in approximately a month and then will it take time for the contractor to get geared up or?
To mobilize and get the right sub in the right place. The other thing that we're also having to coordinate is to make sure that we have first in order the water, the electricity and the cable for the clubhouse, because those will all come down as we start our work. So it's part of the settlement. We, and have been very consistent that we will make sure that the clubhouse is still served with those utilities. And eventually there will be a permanent water sewer and cable that comes down and access roads along our north side of our property. But we'll have to do an interim connection for how many months. So that'll be the first order. But yeah, somewhere hopefully we'll be doing a groundbreaking and have some equipment out there and pictures to take and all that. So.
So I do want to share some information, ask a question regarding to the historic house that's out there. Something that lays onto the Historic Resources Commission. In our meeting last week, this was a topic of discussion for the members of HRC. And the outgoing chair had mentioned that they've been trying to get inside of the house and see the inside, but have not been able to. So do you know why that would be? And can I, can we, is it okay to request that they are able to see it?
I have not, I was not aware that they were actually trying to get inside. I mean, we've got pictures from before, and even when the folks, I think they vacated about a year ago, the tenants did. So I can check on it. I just don't know the status of it. Obviously, there's, I'd have to check on liability issues with that, but I can, I can look into it.
Thank you.
Get with me and I'll, I'll work with Paul.
I mean, we do have a strong community of Historic Resources advocates in town and in Benton County. And so I think they are interested in seeing, I, so what, from what I heard, the plan is to carefully demolish and take the parts to a historic salvage yard. Is that?
The proposal is we would provide enough for the contractor to do a process like that. He is looking for a sub company to come in and do that. And that would be a separate bid as part of his bid, and that we would do that if that works out. So I think we set aside somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 to facilitate that.
Thank you. Is there a reason, and I'm asking because I just generally don't know, is there a reason that we wouldn't offer to potentially sell the house to someone who wanted to come move it like for a dollar or something?
I think the determinations it made, it's, it's in such bad shape, it probably wouldn't survive the move. So we went past that option a while ago. Yeah.
Do you have, you, could you share with me any documents that state that?
I can, I can find them, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, any further questions about courthouse, District Attorney's Office? I do note that in the update, the written update, it does state that in addition to the careful and demolition of the Swick House to take, make use of any historic elements, there's also a plan for an interpretive display in the new courthouse and a digital exhibit hosted online. So that, that's, and that's pretty typical of a mitigation plan that's negotiated with SHIBO. The Van Buren Bridge Project also had a very extensive mitigation plan. So we are mindful of the, of the historic nature of the property.
And it's actually the one that Commissioner Ojo just talked about, the interpretive and getting a display put together. I think something would actually be put into the new courthouse. And there's the salvage that we talked about. The other one is doing a, an audit basically of other structures of that nature and history and having the county pay for that bigger study to be done. And then that information is logged in. I think people can then use it if they have another house of that nature, and they wanted to get it registered. So that's about a $15,000 to $30,000 thing that the county will do. But both, that, that would happen after, because it takes a bit of time to have that done. So that's, again, one of the mitigation measures that we've offered to SHIBO to have the house.
I, I do appreciate all of that, and I think that's great. Although arguably, the best way to preserve history is just to preserve the structure versus interpret, an interpretive situation, but thank you.
I would, Commissioner, just a couple of things. One, the historic windows were removed quite a while ago by the previous owner. So we now have some sweet vinyl windows in it. There were some other architectural features that were actually removed from the house as well. So it's kind of fallen down in nature, too, and it's actually historic value. But we'll still go through these other options here and try to preserve what we can.
I think that's part of the reason why some of our members from the HRC wanted to see the inside of it, just to verify that. Yeah.
The last one is the EOC, Emergency Operations Center. We have just finished up with design development, which means a set of plans have sort of gone out with all the parties to look at. That is the process that really the footprint is pretty much set when we get through design development and review of that. So that the next phase would then be going into construction plan preparation. And I think we have about eight weeks set aside to go through design development, maybe six. It'll be a much simpler process in the courthouse because it's, it's a pretty standard building for that. But they are working directly with the sheriff, under sheriff, and Brian to make sure it's what they need. And once they go into construction plans and get those all done, then you would see it submitted to our, our group again, like we did with the courthouse. And hopefully the permit for that would be issued somewhere around the first of the year. That's kind of our plan right now. But that's okay, because this one would get started probably next spring. And the idea is they both come across the finish line about the same time. Right now, we're still late spring, early summer of '26 is when we're looking to have things done. This is the courthouse, more than the This is the courthouse more than the EOC, but the courthouse is going to have maybe a longer burn-in period so that we could get substantial completion done here. But there's a lot of intricate things that need to take place in the courthouse before it's going to be ready to host a trial. So I think all of that's going to take a little bit longer than normal, but and we would want that all done for the most part before we start moving folks in. So you might see a building almost really ready to occupy, but making sure it's functioning correctly is going to take a little bit longer. Good news is I think we're very ready to start. So the EOC is on budget. So again, I think we've been able to, we've weathered the big inflationary times and the team's really working pretty well together now to kind of know what we want. And again, the sheriff, we don't need that, we don't, you know. He, he's pretty minimal on what he's asking for. So it's, it's been a little different perspective.
Excellent. Yeah, as I understand it, for the EOC, one of the most important components is just the communications capacities. And that is critical. And we now have what we need in terms of storage space for all of the equipment and everything else, so.
And the consultants have worked a lot with, with the radio folks and make sure we've got all the things in that own dedicated room of all the bells and whistles needed. We actually will have a tower out back, radio tower to facilitate that. So, and it'll have its own standalone generator as well.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm glad your list is shortened from last month. It must be a relief.
Well, I think too, just, you're probably not going to see a lot happening, you know, I mean, month to month, but we'll be able to keep you up to date and hopefully not have any surprises.
Next up, we have Jesse Otten, Adam Stebbins, from the Natural Areas, Parks and Events Department, to talk about McBee Forest stewardship plan update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. I'm here with the Natural Resource Coordinator, Adam Stebbins. And we are here to talk about the McBee Campground and Forest. So we have a forest stewardship resource plan that helps guide our forestry activities. And so we've recently worked through an amendment with our Parks Advisory Board. And this was approved last month at the Parks Advisory Board meeting for June. And so what this is, is a small logging project on the campground side and a larger kind of thinning and fire attack route plan that we have for the forest side. So just a reminder in total, so the acres that we have out there is 117 acres. About 25 of it is the campground side and the rest is what we're just referring to as the McBee Forest at this time. And so I'll turn it over to Adam to give an update on the forest resource stewardship plan update.
Thanks, Jesse. So as Jesse mentioned, we, you know, have this forest stewardship plan that covers Fitton Green, Fort Hoskins, Mizell Memorial Forest. So that is certified under the Forestry Sustainability Council. So we just completed our update to have the McBee Forest added minus the campground side. That's going to be just maintain as campground, not as any type of sustainable forestry operation. Here's a little overview. So the first project goals that I was tasked with to really, one, prep the campground side for the public parking. And then two, begin to establish fire control access also with initial thinning that has to be done within the adjacent units. So we had the initial, you know, layout completed. We had the initial forestry data collected for all of the different units out there. We used that to get the certification, then we started moving into developing the harvest plan, which we're looking at starting within the month. The first location, as I mentioned, will be at the current public parking, which is pretty minimal. There's a lot of large diameter Doug fir throughout there. You could probably only safely park like, I don't know, five or six vehicles in there. So all of those trees are going to be removed. The, at the same time, dual benefit here is to get the worn-out roof structure off of that long table at the front as well, with the equipment that'll be out there with our logging contractor. Yeah, so once all those Doug fir are logged and there's access in there, then we'll have our landscape steward, Devin, go out there and do stump grinding of all the stumps, get them subsurface to prep it for the parking lot, which will come, I guess, in 2025 as far as the full build out of that parking lot.
Yeah, and I would add too, when we say parking lot, what we're talking about is a small geocell system. So we put down geocells, put a substrate of minimal intrusion into that area. Provides a good sturdy base in a very wet spot and it's good for water filtration at that proximity to the stream.
So it's not paving?
It's not paving.
Thank you.
The second goal of the project is on the main area where the forest resources are. Opening up access, keeping screening from South Fork Road, but going in and starting to thin those units that are perfect timing paired with this project to open up the public parking. That's, in a nutshell, again, we're, we have our permits in with Oregon Department of Forestry. Got that initial approval. Logging contractors lined up to start within the next couple of weeks. And should have good access after that.
I see that on my, it says end of slideshow, click to exit.
Yeah, that's.
It'd just be a little bit more pleasant for people viewing if.
Oh, got you, got you.
No, no worries. I mean, I'll say thank you for the information. And as I've said before, this is kind of hard for me because that's my favorite campground in the whole world. And our favorite spot to camp there is spot five, which is now going to be the parking lot. So that's kind of tugging at my heartstrings, but I'm trying to have the whole vision, the long-term vision in mind, so.
Our goal was to really light touch. We had considered a couple other entries onto the campground side and just made the choice to keep it as minimal as possible, keep the changes there slow and intentional.
I think that that's wise. I, I have also camped there. And I know that part of the reason it's so appealing to people is because it's so forested and not bright. And it's a, it's a great mushrooming site. It's very popular for that as well. And so I'm, I'm grateful for the light touch and judging by the revenue projection, it's not a huge amount of money. It's not about the money. It's more about safety and about access at this point. So I appreciate that. And, and then the longer term, I see that there is potential for a little bit more revenue generation on the forested area that is not part of the campground. And I'm look forward to hearing more about that when it's time.
Thank you.
I was curious what the, while this work goes on, what's the status of the campground slash picnic area as far as public access?
So right now, we do have a gate up that you can just park at and hike in. But it's a little bit, it's easy to get parked in. So if you go out on a hike, somebody can park behind you and folks will get stuck out there. So we've heard that a few times. It's a very popular day use. Every time we go down there, we see folks from all over exploring. And so that is, that was kind of what we wanted to tackle. So right now, there is day use. Anybody can go out there and, and enjoy and have a good time hiking around. But what we see is a lot of folks are kind of parking in the ditch, parking on some of the tree roots, encroaching in into areas where, you know, we kind of hope to formalize the, the campsites a little more.
Okay, and you mentioned Trout Mountain. They've developed the plan for, for this campground?
No, no, no. They didn't build a plan. So they did an initial assessment of the, I guess you'd call it like the rough calculations of different forest units there. So Doug was fur dominated areas, areas that were in reproduction that were previously clear cut. And then, you know, mixed species units and delineating, initial delineation based on data that was provided by the Whole Oaks folks that completed that work. So within a year, we have to do a full-scale assessment on that site to have current accurate data on all of the resource management units out there as part of our certification.
And will that be done by Trout Mountain or in-house?
In the past, we just put that out for bid. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's exciting to see the work moving forward and looking forward to the campground being open again. Okay. We are now moving into new business. Interested in a break or not? Okay, five-minute break and then we will address item 5.1.
I've returned from our break and we are going to proceed with item 5.1, approval of contract between the Oregon Youth Authority and Lynn counties with Matt Weatherall. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. I bring before you this morning this agreement between the Oregon Youth Authority, Lynn County and Benton County. This agreement is about the campus where the Lynn Benton Detention Center resides. It is not about the detention bed contract that I brought before you a few weeks ago. This is second, that is a separate agreement between Lynn and Benton County. In 1996, the Youth Authority, Lynn County and Benton County developed the property where the facility is located. There was an agreement between the state and the counties around the purchase and development of the property located at 4400 Lochner Road Southeast in Albany. The reason we are included in this contract, Benton County provided $93,000, a $561,600 land purchase. We also agreed to spend $175,000 of the $1.1 million infrastructure improvements for that property. After the property was developed and the facility was built, another agreement was issued in 2003 permitting Lynn and Benton Counties to use a portion of that facility to operate a juvenile retention facility at our own expense. This agreement that you have before you provides a framework for communication, cooperation, specified conflict resolution process, established methodology for calculating expenses and reconciliation in relation to the operation of the detention facility. This new agreement that you have in front of you is between the counties and the Youth Authority. We also have the first right of refusal. If Lynn County ever decides they don't want to operate a detention facility, we have the option of taking that facility over and this contract explains that process. The old agreement expired a couple of years ago, so we've been kind of operating under just continuations. I think there's, I know there's at least four continuations since 2020. We finally got it resolved. This agreement will be in effect from the 1st of January of 2024 until June 30th of 2044. So it's a 20-year agreement. I ask that you just approve the agreement. I will then execute my signature and sign it and send it back to the Oregon Youth Authority. It's already been executed by Lynn County and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Questions?
So then this is a new agreement to replace what we've been operating on for quite a while.
At least 20 years, yes. At least 20 years, yes.
And I assume it clarifies some of the things that have come up in the first 20 years that weren't clear.
Yes, there's been a lot of improvements to back from the final page in your document regarding this. There's a map of the facility and the areas that are circled in red that Lynn County is kind of responsible for. So there's a greenhouse and a garden and some other pieces of that property that were kind of.
Okay, appreciate that.
Any other questions? I just want to say that 1996, that's the same time when there were negotiations going on about having a joint correctional facility between Lynn and Benton Counties that didn't ever come to fruition. But I'm glad that this did. It's a good example of collectively operating a facility and sharing in the functions. So, but I do have one question. And that is last time you were before us, when we were looking at our contract with Lynn County about bed usage for Benton County. You mentioned that Lincoln County is also renting beds, but they're not a party to this agreement. Does, is that an issue?
It is not. So the, it's because it's the operation of the detention facility. The Director in Lynn County has the ability to contract with other entities in order to use the allotted bed space. We have 20 beds in the facility. When the, when the original contract was written, we were responsible, Benton County was responsible for nine beds of the 20. So that has been reduced over the years. And with our financial stake in the purchase of the building kind of necessitates us having to help with the operational expense. And four beds is where we've landed currently. It was outlined in the, one of the rough drafts we would. In fact, I think it was six beds and we had to have that removed.
And so our, our share of the operational expenses is based on bed share?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I'll move to approve the contract between the Oregon Youth Authority and Lynn Benton Counties to operate the detention center.
Second, all in favor, please indicate with an aye. 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 Thank you.
Thank you. And Vance, I will put this through this. Didn't figure you could.
Next up, we are going back to community development with approval to apply for Transportation Growth Management Program Grants, Resolutions 2024-20 and R2024-21 with Petra Sheets, Inka Williams, and James Wright and Jesse Ott. Actually, Petra is sitting back. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Inka Williams with the Community Development Department. And first off, this is not going to take 40 minutes, probably 10 minutes or less. And James and I did not coordinate on colors, neither did Jesse, although this just shows how well we partner together, I think. So we are here to ask you to approve two resolutions for us to submit for grants to the Transportation and Growth Management Program. This is, that program is a coordination collaboration between the Department of Land Conservation and Development and the Oregon Department of Transportation or DLCD and ODOT as they are short, shortly called. And the program that we are submitting under is the category two, which is the Integrated Land Use and Transportation Planning Part of That. And that purpose is to help governments develop integrated land use and transportation plans. So we are going to be, well, we as the Natural Areas and Parks and Events Department will be submitting for one grant and then my department will be submitting for the other grant. Our grant being, well, James and Jesse are partnering on their grant. And that is for the Master Trails Update. I'll be submitting for the evacuation assessment. And we are requesting from the program, we put down $200,000 for each. But it may be more, it may be less. We're not exactly sure when, if we get awarded the grants, ODOT and DLCD will actually do their own assessment of the costs. And that is what we will be awarded. ODOT and DLCD will also, for the Master Trails Plan Update, if there's a consultant that will be hired for that, they will also do the request for proposal. We do not do that process. They, that's the process that they go through. For the evacuation assessment report, we actually have a consultant already in mind. And what ODOT said is that we can actually partner with them. So they will be a partner with us on the grant proposal. And that is a, that's Michael Howard from the University of Oregon. And he is the Assistant Program Director for the Oregon Partnership for Disaster Resilience. And he has completed, well, he's gone through the FEMA program. So I think this is his first time going through this Transportation and Growth Management Plan Program. But he has successfully put through grants for Curry, Lincoln, and Marion Counties to do their natural hazard mitigation plan updates. So we are pretty confident that he will be able to help us with, with our assessment. And also Alex Dai with University of Oregon would also partner with us on this. And he was, he's a faculty research associate. And he actually will provide updated wildfire risk maps for current. And he said he can do up to the next 30 years for our county, just for our county. So that would be very helpful. So we have the two resolutions. Jesse, do you have anything on the Master Trails Update?
No, I would just, I would say, you know, we have a real disjointed trail system, especially what's in our planning documents. And we find that, you know, as we move forward with, so many of these groups are partner projects that require a lot of different agencies and organizations to work together. And what we would love is more of a roadmap. And so I think this process will be great to pull a lot of federal, state, local partners together and nonprofit groups as well and be able to get a comprehensive trail plan that includes hiking, multimodal, and really get that across the board. So I think this effort will also be really good because the last time that Natural Areas and Parks did this, it was kind of an Afrona-led effort nearly a decade ago at this point. And so they will be included as well and kind of bring that group back together to take another fresh look at this. So I think, I think the trails plan will be really good for development and planning of trails in the future. It won't be a surprise.
And the assessment, the evacuation assessment would also include as an alternative use of those linkages for alternate transportation recreation use. So that's also part of what we propose. oh, we sent out a request for letters of support, both of us, Jesse and myself. I've received more back so far and hope to get some more. I think we sent it out to like 20 people each, so.
Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, on the trails plan, I knew there was a one on the shelf that needs some updating. And I think this is a, great to get some help doing what we need to do. It seems like at times the trail systems seem a little bit like islands and figure out, well, if we, how can we connect some of these in a, in a long-term plan? And, you know, may not happen overnight, but at least identify some of the, identify what we have and then, well, what do we, what do we need to make this a more robust system? I guess, how is Green Belt Land Trust involved in this effort?
Yeah, they're involved, very supportive too. I think we had, you know, the conversations we've had with them is really that these, these dreams of putting in these trail systems sometimes take decades. And we needed a comprehensive planning documents that we can get there. Otherwise, you know, halfway through something comes up and throws a wrench in it. So this will be a great start to complete some of those long-term visions.
Really, I think of the Jackson Fraser Wetlands and how to, how to get a trail to, from our side of things to 99 and hopefully in the not-too-distant future, yeah, get a overpass to get safely, get people safely across the highway. And then, you know, connect with Green Belt and Good Sam. And I really like it when different organizations, different sites work in a coordinated fashion. So I, I think this is great. On the emergency evacuation routes, I assume we're coordinated with our wonderful emergency management folks. Because I know I've had conversations with Brian Lee about the recently completed Sheep Farm evacuation route. And hopefully this summer, do some work on the, heading to the west on the Cardwell Hill road and make that a better, or another option that's not falling into the Mary's River. So looking forward to, I guess, a wider look around the county, what our needs are for evacuation routes.
Commissioner Wise, any comments or questions? Only that I supported and I'll be crossing my fingers. Yes, is this a particularly competitive grant or do we know?
Kind of. We did a lot of looking at who has been awarded in the past and they were, they were very exemplary projects. So, you know, we did our best to kind of copy the winners there and how they submitted, so.
Excellent.
I think one of the best parts is our contribution is only a little bit more than 11%.
Yes.
Total. So.
And that can be in-kind contribution?
Yes.
It's excellent. I'm hopeful that we will get both of these. These are both very worthy projects and things that are difficult for us to stretch to beyond the typical permitting role that community development plays. So it's an ideal kind of complement to the work that you all have on your plates and the aspirational work we want to do. One question, when the trails, Master Trails Plan is updated, if, if and when, that, will that fold into the comp plan update?
Cool. Yeah.
Yeah, this program requires that we actually adopt either a land development policy or something into our comprehensive plan. So whichever one gets chosen, hopefully both will have to be adopted.
Okay.
To our comprehensive plan.
Excellent. That's great. Okay. And if there's no further discussion, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. Before the motion, I appreciate connecting with an experienced guide through, through the process, somebody that has experience with, with the process. And because sometimes it can be a little daunting or just having a guide seems like a great idea. I'll move to allow Natural Areas, Parks and Events Department and the Community Development Department to each submit an application for a Transportation Growth Management Program Grant, Resolution numbers 2024 days 020 and 2024 days 021 respectively.
Second, all in favor signify with an aye. Aye, aye. Thank you. Thank you very much and good luck. Okay, moving on now to item 5.3 regarding delegation of solid waste advisory council duties to the Environment and Natural Resources Advisory Committee, Order Number D 2024-048. Vance, County Council, please proceed. I'm sure we'll have questions. And we were also joined by Sean McGuire, who is the staff person who works with the Environment and Natural Resources Advisory Committee.
And also I would note that Sean is responsible for the SMMP project as well, which is why he's been intricately involved with conversations regarding this particular topic. So as you know, the landfill operator, Republic Services, is heading toward filing an application for landfill expansion. As part of that process, Benton County has described in Benton County Code, Chapter 77.305, an opportunity for one of our advisory committees to review the landfill, land use expansion application and to make recommendations to the Planning Commission through the Planning Department on that application. The challenge we have with that particular chapter of our code is that the designated committee, which is the Solid Waste Advisory Council Committee? Council, I guess, I get that one mixed up. SWAC is, SWAC no longer exists. SWAC has been disbanded. SWAC is, will be replaced by the Solid Sustainable Materials Management Plan Advisory Committee, once that group is up and running and once we have an SMMP in place. Unfortunately, that doesn't do us any good in the next two, three months when this delegation of this review authority to SWAC will come into play. So we have two, two options available to Benton County at this time. One would be to designate a different committee to serve in SWAC instead, since we don't have SWAC, or to simply not have this review and recommendation step take place. Essentially, there's, there was, there is no committee that exists to perform the review and recommendation. Therefore, there's no committee to delegate. If you choose not to re-delegate the SWAC authority to NREC, then this step would not occur. So we'd have land use application. Land use application will go through the normal notice, public comment, public hearing process without input from one of our committees. If you choose to avail yourself of NREC's willingness to review the application, then we would have NREC perform the same duties as SWAC would do. So just to comment on a couple of earlier comments, this is not an amendment to our code. You are simply reassigning responsibility for a code obligation to an existing committee. Doesn't require a public hearing, doesn't require a code change. The question of whether DSAC should be the designated committee has come up. Sean and I have talked about this. That's not an appropriate designation for the very simple fact that DSAC contains as a member, an employee of Republic Services. So we don't want to ask a committee whose membership is comprised in part of an applicant to review and make recommendations to Planning Commission. That creates one heck of a conflict of interest for the Republic member. And obviously it creates an optics problem, problem. So that's why DSAC was not selected. We had originally floated the idea, Sean and I, we talked about this, of having the SMMP ad hoc committee perform this task for a variety of reasons. Sean put the brakes on that idea and it, I think, fortuitously so, since that committee's not up and running. For a variety of reasons, Sean put the brakes on that idea and it, I think fortuitously so, since that committee is not up and running. So at this juncture, the the idea that's being put forward to the Board of Commissioners for consideration is whether you would like to have EnRAC step into the shoes of SWAC for the purposes of reviewing and making a recommendation on a landfill expansion application. We set out the parameters in the, in the order and the parameters mirror the language in our code. With one exception, and that is that the rest, the order states there would not be a public hearing. There are two reasons why the direction and the order would include no public hearing. One is really a very practical consideration. The timeframe within which EnRAC or SWAC is asked to both review, meet and make a recommendation and produce a letter, which is what they did in twenty twenty-one, to the planning commission is very, is very short. It's a very narrow window of time for the planning commission holds its hearing. Second, it's the planning commission's role to take public testimony, to take written testimony and to sift through the testimony. It is not this interim reviews committee's responsibility. So those are the two reasons why we clarify. It also helps SWAC to understand just what they're being asked to do. And EnRAC, too many doggone acronyms. So that's, that's what we're asking you to consider. I'd ask Sean to, to jump in with any other comments you might make with regard to EnRAC's willingness to, to take on this task and to answer questions.
I think that it would be useful for you to give a brief characterization of EnRAC and its, the background and skill sets of its members. And then secondly, to give a very brief update as to the status of the Sustainable Materials Management Plan Task Force.
So EnRAC has been around since twenty twenty. We can only have seven, oh, sorry, seven members. You know, Deb, the chair, lifelong champion, especially of nonprofits in the environmental, local egg and economy. Michael, longtime environmental champion, especially I work with him when I can, the Imagine Corvallis Action Network. Three grad students, two masters, one PhD in environmental studies. No one, I mean, these are bona fides and just absolutely committed to, and one researcher to issue to the environmental field. So that's, that's not an issue. And they're just awesome people. Just, it's just a pleasure to work with them. I did, I think it's important to share with you all the process. Vance and I talked and then we went to EnRAC and asked them, you know, you did not tell them, we asked them. And I can share with you there, they did find consensus, but there was a lot of concern. I think the younger students were like, hey, this is really cool and we get to understand how government works. The older ones seeing the GT and, and threats of violence and just a white hot static, for lack of a better word. That was just disappointing. I mean, people should be excited about being part of a process. So they found consensus that they would, they are willing to do this, to step in there. And then now it's respectfully up to you to, to accept that, that offer. So yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, some of the things that were said earlier today, this morning about recent skids and already made a decision. These folks don't play that game. I respect the heck out of them. And it's uneducated and insulting to these members who dedicate their time, they're volunteers, they're committed, they show up every month. And my name is on the EnRAC. So if anybody had any questions, they are more than happy to ask and I would have given that information. So apologies if I'm a little overstepping my bounds, but it's awesome to work with these, with EnRAC. So that is kind of a background on EnRAC and I'm more than happy to answer any other questions. On the SMMP, we just met. Bailey and I are in the beginning stages of setting up conversations and meetings with the, we keep calling them the Baileys of Western Oregon. All the staff members of Solid Waste, staff members in the thirteen counties, basically lane north up to Portland. And so we're, we're actually talking to Lincoln County later today and just kind of picking up where we left off in the, in the spring. Understanding where, where they are, where their pressure points are. We think we have a pretty good understanding of where everyone is, but I'm a policy analyst, I need to hear it for myself. And so that's what we're going to do. I'm going to be dropping our timeline for the checklist for next week. And we'll get into much more of that in the goal setting meeting. So I hope that's enough for at least now, but more than happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. I think mostly I wanted to reassure anyone that's listening in that the Sustainable Materials Management Plan process is not going away. It is still very much with us. We just ended up with a bit of a pause and I think a clarification of what regional means in terms of the work. And we will be discussing that as a board at our goal setting meeting next week.
We could add much more into the details. I can go as deep now or, but basically the region is the thirteen counties, again, lane north. Again, this isn't, trash doesn't know exactly where a jurisdiction ends. It's all over the place. So we'll get more of those details.
Unfortunately, it's all over the place. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions at this time?
Yeah, I appreciate correcting some misinformation that was floating around and and appreciate the background on EnRAC. Does that group have the capacity to take on a challenge like this?
That was a lot of the questions. I think the important part, and Vance hit it, this is a one and done. I mean, what's, and I think the word is complete, once Petra and her staff sign off or genuflect, whatever the verb is on the application, whether it's complete, then it's a hundred and fifty days. As Vance said, that's two months. So again, as a testament to the integrity and lack of bias of EnRAC, we've already started to give them information like the FAQ that Corey and we made give them that. But on their own, they also found the Beyond Toxic, yeah, Beyond Toxic nonprofit. They did a webinar of some sort with Joel Geier, who was also speaking and represented, and they shared that. So again, they're looking at this thing on both sides. So again, apologies if I kind of overstep, but they're taking this very seriously. To get to your question, I think if this was a nine month or something like that, they would have easily said no. This is going to be pretty tense for a couple of months and then off to the planning commission and they're done. So that helped, I think, kind of lay some of their concerns that this is just going to keep going on and on. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. And for those who are listening or maybe will watch or listen to this later, I just wanted to read some of the information from the EnRAC bylaws. It says the committee will research topics and provide input to the Board of Commissioners and county departments and areas related to Benton County's twenty forty vision statement on environment and natural resources. Benton County commits to protect, conserve and enhance our treasured limited natural resources and prepare for future environmental challenges. Additionally, the community will collaborate with other committees and programs that relate to but extend outside of the environment and natural resources vision statements such as outdoor recreation, wildland urban interface and similar topic areas. And then it goes on, but just a little overview though there for people who are not familiar. And I, I do appreciate just reiterating some of the misunderstandings or the misinformation that have been put out there. I, I do want to note just because somebody, just because we haven't come out and said, we're going to vote no on this, doesn't mean we're going to vote yes. We are, we don't know how we're going to vote yet because this is a land use application and it is illegal for us to prevent a land owner from submitting a land use application. So we, as the county and our planning commission and the commissioners, our staff, we are all just doing what we are required to do by law.
Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioner Wise, for that comment. I also feel very strongly that I can only speak for myself, but no, I have no preconceived notions and we must receive any application and look at it in a balanced manner in accordance with county code and with the law. And that's what we shall do. And anything that we do is likely to be appealed. We know that. We have to be extremely scrupulous in terms of the way we do our work. There's no greasing of anything. That's just a really unfortunate perception. I hope that we can change that sense of lack of trust in the community. But what I am seeing lately is much less of people willing to even talk to us. But rather just a willingness to make up their own minds about what our motives are. So I'm hoping we can get back to a point where we are debating and discussing and willing to change our minds on both sides, if there are sides. I don't feel like I have one yet. So, but it's just, we need to approach this process and let the process do its work. Yes.
Just, I just want to clarify, if you are ready to, to make a decision on this, if you choose to adopt the order, there is an amended order. There are two changes I just want to make for the record. First is in the second paragraph where we've added what, we spelled out what the acronym DSAC is and it is committee, it is not council, it's committee. And the sec, and the second change is in the third paragraph that corrects my mistake. I incorrectly identified SMMP as the solid solid materials management plan. It should be sustainable and that correction is made in the, the order. So those are mistakes that came from me. I apologize.
Thank you. And I want to just add one little bit on to what you said, Commissioner Ojero. I do hope that members of the public will participate in the public hearing for the CUP. You know, go to the planning commission if and when it gets appealed to commissioners, please participate in that public hearing and the most helpful thing for decision makers is when you speak to the criteria and can make a valid argument as to why or why not the criteria is met.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion?
Just clarification, the order that's in the packet is not correct. The corrections are what was passed out this morning.
Right. That's correct. Yes.
With, with those two changes. Well, as long as we're editorializing a little bit, I'd like to point out the breadth of issues that we have dealt with this morning. And so we have a wide variety of issues that we deal with on a regular basis and I hope the community is paying attention to the the whole body of our efforts on behalf of Benton County. And with that, I will move to adopt order number D twenty-four days zero four eight, delegating the review and recommendation duties described in Benton County Code, chapter seventy-seven point three oh five from the Solid Waste Advisory Council to the Environment and Natural Resources Advisory Committee.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to the item that is in our addendum, item five point four, which is an amendment to the library services intergovernmental agreement between the city of Monroe, city of Corvallis and Benton County. And Rick Crager, Assistant County Administrator, will present that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ojero. And as noted, this is an addendum that came in late and apologies for that. This, we became aware of this late last week, but wanted to be able to get this in front of you. So just as a quick background, I think as everyone knows, the Benton County Library Service District is part of our judiciary. We are the tax collector in relation to those dollars, which are then of course passed on to the city of Corvallis, who performs the library services with various jurisdictions across the county. We have an intergovernmental agreement that was entered into back in August of twenty ten for library services. It was a bit unique that Benton County was a party to this particular agreement because typically the library services are between the city of Corvallis and the other jurisdictions. In this particular case, the reason we were included because there was a building that was involved at the time, the county was in receipt of dollars that were used to actually construct a building and eventually as in accordance to that agreement, it was going to be deeded over to the city of Monroe. So again, this was an agreement between ourselves, the city of Corvallis and the city of Monroe. Within that agreement, it outlined the responsibilities as it related to that particular building, particularly for the city of Monroe and the city of Corvallis. Again, our, our party, our piece to that was just simply, we were at the time the owner of the building. Within this agreement, it was a continuous agreement with two, I think, different options to renew, which were automatic. I think they happened prior to tenure periods. Over the course of, I would say, the last six months, there has been discussions between the city of Monroe and the city of Corvallis about concerns about the agreement in relation to the city of Monroe having to pay for certain services as outlined in that. That has been a continued discussion between the two cities on how to best resolve. However, the city of Monroe had given indication as in accordance to the agreement that they had intended to terminate this agreement. I think that was done back in December. In accordance to the agreement, it required six months to be on July one of twenty twenty-four. They have since had a conversation and are looking to extend that period or that notice to to the, what you have within your agreement or within this particular agreement to the end of September specifically. So the purpose of this is since we were again a party of this agreement, the Board of Commissioners Chair was the one at the time that had signed it. So we're looking to get approval from the board to empower our chair to be able to sign off on that agreement to move forward. Again, I want to be very clear that this amendment, as it is called, is essentially just putting on notice the intent for the city of Monroe to terminate at the end of that, the period identified. There is still continued conversations going on between the city of Corvallis and city of Monroe about how and what that looks like going forward. And certainly I'm happy to answer any questions. I've been working very closely with Ashley Chavez on this and will continue to do so to help support hopefully a resolution on all this.
Just a clarification. Basically, the intent of this motion is to extend that timeframe for the notice to terminate the agreement in order to allow for these further discussions and to allow for potential solutions to the challenges.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And along these lines, one of the reasons that you're getting this document is because the board originally signed it. We have whoever, whatever department signs, signs amendments. So if you're inclined to move forward with this motion, I would ask it to be amended to say that I moved to authorize the chair to sign the amendment and any other documents related to the library service intergovernmental agreement between the city. That way, anything else that comes down the line, maybe in August, end of September, you've already given the chair the authority to sign off and we're going to have to come back to the board for that. If you're inclined.
Given that this is really an issue between the city of Corvallis and the city of Monroe, I can understand the intent of that, but I will leave it up to my fellow commissioners to frame the motion as they see fit.
Well, I, I mean, that's probably fine, but I think I would prefer to just leave it because I'm not sure what is going to happen either way. because I'm not sure what is going to happen either way. I mean, so I, I've, I'm familiar with this a little bit. I have been in conversations with, uh, Monroe Mayor Dan Sheets and with, um, the Corvallis Library Director, Ashley Chavez. I'm the liaison to the library board and to the City of Monroe. So I'm trying not to get involved, but I'm trying to, you know, both parties have reached out and wanted to speak with me. So I'm trying to just listen and understand what they're saying. And I mean, one thing Ashley noted is that all of the, the branches at one point have asked for janitorial services to be covered by the service district. And she, she did say maybe there's room for a bigger conversation, which would obviously have to have lots of public input and, uh, go through the proper process. So maybe there, maybe we're, we could be looking at a change there or not, I don't know. But what, you know, one thing to note, if, if they do pay for janitorial, that would equal a reduction in services, you know, because there's only so much money. And I think right now people in Monroe are afraid that their library is going to close. And I just want to say, I don't, nobody wants that. Nobody on either side wants the library to close. So I guess with that, um, I will leave it to, to you to say which motion you would prefer.
Yeah, I, I merely, I merely point out that if you don't want to have these come back to you in the future for these amendments on the contract, then you should, you should amend the motion to give the chair the authority to sign future documents related. If you would like to see this come back, um, and you might keep updated, um, as these, um, conversations progress, keep your motion as is.
Thank you. Well, I will move to authorize the Board of Commissioners Chair to sign the amendment and any other documents, uh, developed, uh, to the Library Service, Services Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Monroe, City of Corvallis, and Benton County.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And I too hope for a good resolution and I hope it can be creative and, uh, support the needs of all involved. Okay, at this time, uh, the only item remaining on our, um, board meeting, um, agenda is an executive session. However, I'm going to recess the board meeting and we are going to flow into our, um, County Service District Governing Board meetings, um, before we, um, and then we'll come back to our board meeting and go into executive session. Thank you. Uh, so at this time, I'd like to open the Alpine County Service District Governing Board Meeting on Tuesday, July 2nd. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none. Uh, the next item is the consent calendar, uh, containing the January 2nd meeting minutes.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the new business on the agenda is the Certification of Delinquent Sewer Accounts for Collection uh, under Resolution 2024 dash zero one seven. Merrily, would you like to speak to that? Are there any questions or do I hear a motion?
Move to certify the resolution R 2024 dash zero seventeen and attachment A, a list of delinquent accounts in the Alpine County Service District to the county assessor for extension to the assessment and tax rule as allowed by ORS 454.225.
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye. 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 Thank you. Um, I, is there any other business before the Alpine County Service District? Hearing none, um, the meeting is adjourned at 10:49 AM and we will move into the South Third County Service District Governing Board Meeting. Um, I will open that meeting, um, at 10:49 AM with comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, uh, the next item is the consent calendar, which contains two sets of meeting minutes from January 2nd, 2024 and April 2nd, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next item is new business, uh, for the South Third County Service District Certification of Delinquent, uh, Sewer Accounts for Collection, Resolution Number 2024 dash zero one nine. Are there any questions for staff?
I will entertain a motion.
I, I move to certify the Resolution 2024 day zero one nine and attachment A, a list of delinquent accounts in the South Third Service District to the county assessor for extension to the assessment and tax rules as allowed by ORS
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye. 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 Thank you. Is there any other business between, before the South Third, uh, County Service District? Hearing none, uh, that that meeting is adjourned. We will now return to our regular board meeting and we will, um, enter into executive session under Oregon Revised Statute 192.6602D, as in delivery for labor negotiations. So at this point, we will excuse everyone who is not, uh, a party to this process.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.